Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to September and our first committee of the meeting, or pardon me, committee of the whole meeting as we kick off the final sort of few months of this year. I hope everyone had a good summer and would just like to extend a thank you to our fire crews for all of the work they're doing in keeping our community safe as well as helping others in the interior and beyond. I'd like to give a thank you also to councilors that covered off for me while I was either at UBCM or away, so that would be Councilor Casper at the Regional District Board, and both Councilor Loggins and Councilor Parkinson. So, thank you very much. I do have a, I actually have vacation coming up next week, so Councilor Casper will be attending the regional board for me, and Councilor Parkinson is acting mayor for September and will handle things in the few days that I am away. So, what staff have been busy doing, I'd also like to welcome back our CAO, Ms. Sullivan, and also to give thanks to Mr. Blackhall for holding down the fort while Ms. Sullivan was off, and extend a warm welcome to Ms. Mushada in the back there. Welcome to Suk. And all the staff are pitching in and helping out. It's muchly appreciated. So, what we're doing right now with the committee of the whole, because the upcoming meetings are going to be very busy, we have a regular meeting next week and a special meeting scheduled for the third Monday of September, because then the following week, we're off at UBCM, and then October, the regular meeting schedule will continue on from there. But it was timely for us to sort of look at our priorities and any outstanding resolutions and where they are at. So, there's quite a lengthy report here where you can see that staff have put this all together for us. So, we'll get going here. So, I'd like first an approval of the agenda, please, for our September 5th committee of the whole as presented. Moved by Councilor Pearson. Any questions on it? Councilor Pearson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to add new business to the committee of the whole at the, somewhere in there, if we have an opportunity tonight?
We do, yeah, under item five.
Under item five. So, the new business I'd like to add is the discussion around the release of the Atlantic salmon from the fish farm in Puget Sound.
Okay.
Thank you.
And since we are in committee of the whole, there's no second or required, so that will just go on to the agenda as it's been moved. Anything else from anyone? See none? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Posed, motions carried. Okay, so what we'll do with, we have just the one item to report on, and then maybe, let's see, at seven o'clock, maybe what we can do is say at eight o'clock, or seven, let me think here, about seven fifty-ish, is just see if there's any public input on the first part. Maybe that would be helpful, so that you don't, our intent is to get through this in a reasonable timeframe, but the public might not be able to sit through the whole thing, so that way we can welcome some input in partway through. If that works for everyone here? Very good. Okay, so we will carry on, and I will turn this over to staff, please. If you could introduce the report, please, to our CAO, and then we can go through it and then have a discussion about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship, and to the rest of council. Staff thought it was timely that we take a look at the work that's been done by this council since your election. In November of 2014, as you can see in the report, we've had a very, very busy three years with 359 resolutions passed by this council. These resolutions do not include first-second readings, basic follow-up items, and writing letters on behalf of mayor and council, which we consider to be operational in nature. These resolutions all have an effect on staff time and budget resources. In addition to this, we've had 2017 council strategic plan, of which we were looking for some direction on. There's about 59 strategic priorities for this council. And so, moving into the next year, so staff are hoping that council can provide us with some focused direction on what you would like to see accomplished over the next year or so. And to that end, we have streamlined our tracking processes. We've taken a number of tracking lists, put them into one, of which you are, you all have a copy of, as does the public. There are some 52 outstanding or active resolutions that we are asking council to let us know what your priorities are, in addition to your strategic plans. So, at the end of the conversation, or as we move through this fall, staff are going to be asking council to, to take a look at some fairly large discussion decision items, one being our sewers. We're at near capacity. It's no surprise to anyone. Staff need direction from council now in order to start making decisions, or start making plans for expansion and growth, economic development in our community. So, we need decisions this fall in order for us to prepare for where we want to go in two years. The other large items that we need direction from staff are with respect to the conditions of our roads. We've got a draft assessment report, and it looks as though we need to focus some conversations in October on the condition of our roads and our priorities moving forward over the next five years. Staff are also, as you recall, last fiscal or last year, our director of finance smoothed out our five-year plan, our financial plan. And staff are now taking a look at planning five years out, both resources, budgetary, staffing requirements, as we continue to grow as a community. So, with that backdrop, staff are asking for council's consideration with respect to priorities, and would like to know how you would like to proceed with the conversation.
Thank you. Okay, so we have, thank you for that intro there, and we have the report in front of us. And so, in order to move through this in a timely manner, any ideas on how you would like to tackle this? Councilor Ray then Parkinson?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. One of the things that I noted as we went through it, the, the assigned areas are development services, corporate, and finance. And I'm just wondering if try to priori, prioritize within those three, like, for example, finance only has three items on here. Given it's finance and budget, we might want to look at doing something in that area first, and then looking at the other two areas.
Good idea. Councilor Parkinson?
I would like to see us go through each one individually.
Okay. Councilor Loggins?
I don't know about going through the assigned column. Maybe we could put that through to our staff and see if that would work, just because they, of course, have other things going on, but I don't know, it might work. One thing I was thinking is if we can just, like, I've, I've gone through these in depth, and there are some that I'm thinking, okay, we can get rid of that, we can get rid of that, or that's moved forward. And some of them are priorities to me, and I think it would be nice to go through either tonight or come back and talk about what are, what we see as priorities moving forward into the next year and a bit, and also how they do or don't match up with our strategic plan. So, I think we need to make sure that any priorities, if we do choose to make priorities out of these, how they align with our overall goals as a district.
Okay. I think it may be, like, just try, let's just go through them. Let's start that and, and just see. Obviously, if council needs more information, we don't have to get into a lengthy discussion on this, but if there's something that you're needing, some of them are in progress, and then we can just, let's just, let's start it and see how it flows. How's that?
If I may, Your Worship, please remember that these are resolutions of council. Council's already considered them. They've already had staff reports done. And so, what we're asking for is council's reconsideration of these resolutions, given the five strategic goals that we have up here on the board, or on the wall for you all. To ask for additional information just means that we're going to delay a decision. And that's okay, if you want to delay the decision, but we are heading into getting our budget finalized by December 31st this year. And so, really, what we are taking a look at, maybe not decisions tonight, as Council Loggins said, but let's go through them one at a time. And we're not looking for direction tonight, but if you want to come back at a special meeting or a different meeting, once you've had an opportunity to go through them, had a little bit of a discussion here, and then come back, that's perfectly okay with us as well.
Okay. All right, let's just hit it. Okay, number one, renaming of Cooper's Cove. It's, well, no, you have to turn on your microphone and tell me something, because I don't know what the code is. Councilor Parkinson? Sorry.
So, it appears that this has already been completed. It says that the mapping has been changed to reflect Cooper's Cove, but I don't know if a new sign has been put up. I haven't noticed that bad, Brenda.
If you take a look at the comments section to your far right, is that, that's what you're looking at, sorry, my apology. The request has been made to the province. We've not seen an update.
So, I imagine it's just in the queue.
With the province.
Yeah, so I think we're good. Councilor Parkinson?
I was going to say, do we not put up our own park signs, which we have on every park in the district?
This is a street name.
Excuse me, Your Worship. Yeah, the, the mapping internally has been changed and the province has not. I'm not sure if a new sign has been placed up to reflect the change in the name, but I will check on that, and I can report back on that.
Okay, so I think it's just if, we can have this refreshed, I mean, really, it's just a case of getting a sign. So, if it needs a sign, just put it up, and then we add the comment, and we're good. So, we actually don't need a report back. I think it's just this resolution part. You know, maybe in six months' time, we can have it refreshed, and then it's like, sign installed, done. Sound good? Good. Okay, good. Number two. Okay, so there's sponsorships, a policy. It looks like there's a language, there's something drafted here in the community grant policy. It's an amendment, and it'll come back to council for further discussion. So, it looks like that just needs to hit an upcoming meeting. That's how I read that.
Staff are recommending that we don't do a separate policy.
Yep.
Okay, we're, we're clear on that? So, it's going to be a part of the community grant policy?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, this will kick off later on this year, so when we get to that portion, and once through the budget, we know what we're going to allocate, we advertise out, we can have it, it's just amendments. So, we'll look for that, to that a little bit later. Okay. The mon, we're having a technical issue for the monitors, and they're not working this evening, but there is a report that's within the, within the papers, if I'm not mistaken. The font's really small, I see. Yeah.
Wait, we have a spare copy?
We have a spare copy. Well, we can send that back, and then you can read that. This is the exact same materials that is in the green pages.
We're on number three.
We're on number three. Okay, we'll move along here. Use of Cooper's Cove Highway right-of-way for park purposes. And so, this looks like it's, there's still some ongoing work with, between our staff, the CRDA, and the MOTI on this item here. So, we'll just wait for more information to come back from those entities ongoing. For mayor's public advisory panel arts and beautification, it was about getting some signage done, but the grant was not received, and the project was halted. Councilor Parkinson?
So, I, I would think that this one can be removed, because we do not, no longer have this committee. And I've been on the committee for a number of years, and there was no grant that we applied for. We were doing the signs, and we have ours up, but for the First Nations, we don't have the information that we require. So, the signs are downstairs with the pictures.
They just need to be installed?
It needs a write-up for which, like, the heron. And then, in the First Na, South Nation language, it would say what it is. So, we were waiting for that. But the signs are downstairs with pictures on them.
So, really, it'd be nice to look for a grant opportunity.
They only, yeah, they only cost like 20 bucks each. We're just waiting for the information. That was it.
Okay. Well, if we have them all sitting downstairs, though, like, when we want to get them up?
For years, we've done.
But don't we, we should, it just feels like we should finish it.
We could put them up without the information on them, just the pictures. Because we, what we did was, we sent out for an artist to paint the, the pictures. So, Michelle DeRoche did the one for our language, I guess. And then, we had First Nation artists do the other ones. So, everything's been completed. The information is not here. And we looked it up to put the information on, but we can't put that on without their approval.
Okay, so maybe we can just follow up, perhaps, on the, it just seems if we have them, and there are, they should be installed on the board. Sure. Pardon?
I think what Councilor Parkinson is saying is that we can't complete the works until we hear back from South Nation, and we've not heard back yet. So, we can certainly try to follow up with the South Nation, but as so far as Councilor Parkinson's concerned, I think what I heard her say is we can take it off the list.
Okay, so just follow up with, so do, I, I'm stuck. Do we follow up, or do we not?
Staff can certainly try to follow up.
I just think, they're, they're there, they're, they're done. We should finish it off. Okay. Six five two seven Suk Road Development Permit, Development Barrens Permit. Files on hold pending further applicant, from the applicant. So, we're good. We're waiting for the applicant. Is that good for everyone? Proposed 2016 outstanding B three-something Suk zoning bylaw, proposed amendments. And this is waiting on, okay. The action is that staff look at including consistency and permitted uses throughout the commercial zones in the next zoning bylaw review. OCP bylaw needs to be done first before the bylaw review. Staff are, however, undertaking a review of commercial kitchens. So, this has to do with home-based businesses having the use to convert a suite into a, into a secondary kitchen, if I'm not mistaken. So, the OCP review is ongoing, and then, yeah, I think we just like to get that staff report.
Yes, Your Worship. Originally, we were going to wait for the OCP to be reviewed, but because of the delay in the OCP, we're moving forward with researching the ability to have secondary, or two kitchens in the dwelling, and we'll bring forward a report.
Okay, good. We'll look forward to that. Councilor Casper?
Yes, and also that if there were lesser, lesser uses or uses that were in C1 zone all the way up to a C4 zone, that those uses that are in the, the lower impact zones would be permitted in the other zones. Because we talked about the fact that our, our commercial zoning bylaws too compartmentalized, and, and you've got different zones that, that really don't make any sense by being different in each of the categories, when they're not going to have any negative impact if it's, if it's a C1 zone use and the people have a C3 zone, like retail, or, you know, something along those lines. Like, we had a big discussion about it, and it, it just didn't seem to make sense, because it just showed that our zoning bylaw actually was impeding business as a whole, because we've got four categories. And somebody in one zone wasn't allowed to do something another, they had to rezone their property for one stupid little thing, whether it was a retail component, or selling furniture, or mending curtains, or whatever. It wasn't permitted in a different zone.
And, and if I may, Councilor Casper, three-year worship, we've heard the feedback from council loud and clear, and when we go through that zoning bylaw, we certainly take that into consideration, absolutely.
Counselor Pearson, did you have something you wanted to add?
No, that's exactly what the intent of that discussion, because it says C1 to C4. So, the, so the notion that we were trying to create is that if it's permitted in C1, it would be automatically included in C2, C3, and C4. It goes uphill, but not downhill, because the.
Okay, got it. Okay. We're good? Okay. Item two, the gateway to Suk project, I think it's been put on hold. Does anyone know? Counselor Parkinson?
Through Your Worship, I was just wondering if Counselor Pearson has heard anything from being on the museum committee. When I talked to the Lions member, they stated that they weren't going to be doing this project, and they were going to be doing something at the museum instead.
Tomorrow night, there's a museum meeting, so I'll be there. I'll bring it up.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think this can.
On hold for more information from Lions Club. Through Counselor Pearson. Thank you.
Okay, we have item three. We talked about the firearms bylaw earlier in the year. And then, there was a number of discussions about that. So, and that the report include amendments, I thought it was we were waiting for something to come back. Here it says requires council direction. We, I don't think we adopted the bylaw.
You didn't.
Okay.
Sorry, through Your Worship, or Your Worship, a number of bylaws and different iterations of the bylaw have been in front of this mayor and council, and to date, we have not had direction from council with respect to the bylaw. So, we can certainly bring it back for discussion at a future council meeting, or if there are specific changes, various councilors wants a, a staff to include in this bylaw, then please let us know. It's, it's one of these things that are outstanding.
Right.
And that we call it in our, in our streamlined resolution tracking process.
Counselor Pearson, then Parkinson?
Yes, through the chair to our CAO. There was a very comprehensive rewrite of the bylaw that came to us from our deputy corporate officer, I think. And there were some complex proposals within that, so the bylaw itself became more onerous. I think we looked at it sort of in general. So, I think it was, we wanted it to come back again, but streamlined is what, if I can remember. It was, it was a great bylaw, but very complex, when we already have a number of regulations, the Fish and Wildlife Act, there's, and there's the, there's a number of things that we're, we're trying to sort of rewrite things that are provincially mandated. I would, I would be happy if we dropped this off here, actually.
Oh, well, I'm always happy to hear that from a counselor. With all due respect to Counselor Pearson, you're absolutely right. I think a lot of the conversation was, was around council's questions with respect to whether or not we really have to have a bylaw for this, because we have provincial statute that covers what the district was intending to do with this bylaw anyway. You might recall that Director Hicks brought this forward last spring, I believe in spring 2016, for this council to consider doing something similar. And we've kind of gone around the circle since then. So, if council's happy with following provincial legislation, and what's in that provincial legislation, then we, we can take this one off our list.
Just for clarity, Counselor Parkinson, then back to Ray, then to Pearson. Go ahead, Counselor.
Three-year worship. I do not believe that this should be taken off, because I do not believe that bow hunting should be allowed within our municipality. We've had deer running around in, down on Whiffens Bit with arrows in them. And there, the woman who wrote about this was because people were shooting or firing the arrows on property right on Whiffens Bit Road, and fearful for their children getting hit by arrows. So, you know, if you have property on the outside, whatever, fine, but within our municipality, I do not believe that you should be able to shoot bows.
Counselor Ray then Pearson?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. If my recollection is correct, it had started with Director Hicks asking us to add something into the current bylaw for hunting the geese. And from that, it grew in terms of, because it happened at the same time the letter came in from this lady. So, there were a couple of motions, but that's where it started, was with Director Hicks, and then sort of, we took it to the next step with this lady's letter. So, I guess I'm reluctant to take it off. I, I think we need to resolve it one way or another. And I, I'm not sure how much agreement you're going to get at this table on that.
That's the challenge with respect to where staff sit and needing council direction, because we, we have put a couple of versions of this bylaw in front of council, and we can't seem to get agreement. So, we can certainly keep it on the list of bylaws to review as we continue to review all of our bylaws. And remember, the, the purpose of this exercise is And remember, the, the purpose of this exercise is to get priorities from council for the next thirteen months. So if we can keep it into that context, then we'll keep it on the list and see where it shakes out at the end.
Councillor Pearson?
Yeah, I have, I have no issue with leaving it on because I think the intent was, started with the correspondence from the individual. And then Director Hicks challenged us to what we were actually passing because there is, there's a control of a nuisance that's also mixing in. If we would have passed our bylaw, we would have rendered that, that call ineffective. They wouldn't have been able to do it in our municipality. So there's a, there's, it's, it's quite complex. I think it needs to go back to the drawing board and, and whatever council wishes. It's just that what, we were trying to rewrite where there's a whole bunch of regulations in place, distances from homes. There's a bunch of, there, there's also some loopholes in the regulations down in the Whiffenspit area where the, where, and I won't name the, the area, but there's, there's some loopholes where people were hired to take care of certain things and, and it gets out of control. And the province is the, is the jurisdiction that actually controls all of this when we, when we looked into this more so. Anyways, if people want to leave it on, I'm fine with leaving it on. I just think that it's going to be one of those things that it'll be around and around and around. We'll be back to square one again. Thank you.
Well, I think it remains on the list and then when it comes back, then we vote accordingly. And then it either passes or it fails. Councillor Casper?
So I, I would suggest that if, when it does come back, we have two elements that are amendments to the bylaw. One is dealing with the bow hunting issue. The other is dealing with the provisions for allowing the culling of geese. And let the chips fall separately on those two issues. And otherwise, the way it was before, it just got way bigger than what we'd originally envisioned. And I think that's what helped create the problems.
Good. Does that work? Perfect. Okay. We have a recommendation from the Climate Action Committee from March of twenty sixteen. Moved and seconded to direct staff to investigate opportunities for local yard waste composting facilities and/or programs. Staff is checking with staff.
Thank you, your worship. We've done some looking into it, but unfortunately this year with other priorities, we've had to put it aside. We just haven't had the ability to get right into it. Plus the fact that we'd like a little bit more deliberation from council, direction from council and specifically what you're looking for with regards to this. I mean, we can do research, et cetera, with regards to opportunities for local yard wasting and composting facilities. But just a little, bringing some finality from council with regards to what is it specifically that you're looking for?
Councillor Loggins?
Thanks. I was on the Climate Action Change, the Change Action Committee. It was actually a pretty good a committee to be on. But I think this is just an idea that came up and it was more investigate it and see what's out there, see if it's something we could implement now or in the future. And, and our staff seemed to be pretty excited and knowledgeable about that. So just digging a bit deeper into it. I don't think this is a priority, but to just have it in our back pocket is something to think about if the opportunity arises. I think that would work. It was an opportunity to, I know there was another, which one is this for? In our twenty sixteen outstanding, number eleven was the composting facility, utilizing biosolids and yard waste. I have a feeling that these things were connected for some reason and I could totally be wrong. But I just see the budget to twenty eighteen, fifty thousand. And I remember one of the discussions that we had about the composting facility was that it would be an opportunity for the district to actually make money. So just wanted to throw that out there.
So maybe just do more to add to that, Mr. Howard?
Yeah, thank you. That brings a little more clarity. It also can be wrapped up in our dialogue with regards to the issue with, with regards to the sewer extension and what we're going to do with waste as well. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Casper?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not in favor of the district getting wrapped up in these types of services, mainly because as far as biosolids are concerned, it's, it's federally, or sorry, provincially regulated. The regional district is currently looking at the whole issue of biosolids and what they plan on doing with it region-wide. And the province has mandated the capital regional district to have something in place by two nineteen, correct? And so, but, but I just, I, I think, you know, we, we have waste haulers that are hauling compostable material. People can make a choice to compost at home. I, I just think that, that it may be an extra burden on our taxpayers to pay for something that perhaps they don't really have to pay for when, when it should be user pay driven. And it's like, you want to take your compost to Heartland Road or wherever you go, you pay a fee. You want to do it at home, you do it for free. I don't think our taxpayers should be saddled with additional burden. That's why we're not in the waste collection business as a municipality, because people want consumer choice. They can, they can phone up three contractors of their choice and get the service they want. It's not cheap for municipalities to get into this type of business because then we assume all the responsibility on disposing of the material. So I just say that as a caution. And I, I'm not saying that the intention isn't right, but I just think that we have to do this with eyes wide open.
So probably, thank you for that, councillor Casper. Probably since those discussion had occurred, there has been a lot of movement at the CRD because the main thing was the sewer wastewater treatment has been ratified. Now they're moving through that process in terms of all the waste that's collected and it's exactly as councillor Casper said, with the biosolids, the other forms of waste, compost and the like, it's all being dealt with through the Integrated Resource Advisory Committee, one that actually chairs, so I'm quite familiar with it. In that regard, in terms of, we have a few on the next page, so it kind of all ties together about pivotal IRM, advanced gasification of waste, and then that's number seven and number eleven. The challenge is, is that Suk doesn't have enough stock to run something like this and to make it viable. And actually, they're looking at what the CRD produces in its area itself and whether there's a suitable amount of feedstock. So that's what will come out through that process. But as a municipal, if you take even our biosolids and our waste and everything, there's not enough, it, there's no, so that's why it hasn't happened. We're too small of a community. And so I think pivotal might be bidding on, or maybe has, certainly has the opportunity to bid on what the CRD as a whole will do. And in that case, we would be participating in that regard, mainly with our biosolids and whatever. And then it's up to the private haulers whether they haul to Heartland or not because not all private haulers use Heartland. And so that's also, we'll just have to see over time in terms of how all of this is handled. But I think ongoing, certainly when there's different events locally, you see the compost group come out, they do a lot of educational means. We can certainly support those sorts of things for backyard composting and the like. So we can kind of, I think, they really just, we'll see how it shakes out with the CRD and what we're left with. That's where we're at, in my view.
And thank you, your worship. Again, these are resolutions made by this council, so if this council wants to withdraw these resolutions, then it's certainly up to you to do so. Staff are looking for direction.
Yeah, in my view, they stay there for now. They're just, I don't feel that they need to have any action on them. I think it's the case of once the CRD resolves what it's going to do, then we can see what is left for us as a community to deal with. It may be the case where, do we set out sort of a yard waste collection type of yard down the road as our parks department? I don't know if that's something that people are looking for, is a place to bring their yard waste. It may be the case of, there's been a lot of complaints coming my way about the burning, where people burn their yard waste, but there's no alternative. So what does the alternative look like? So there's that conversation. I don't like just taking off a resolution here. That makes me uncomfortable for some reason. But I think when there's new information that pushes one off, then it makes it redundant in that regard. Councillor Parkinson?
Through you, your worship. Can we put these items that staff do not have to do anything with at the back of the list and say, no action required at this time? So they know exactly where those items stand?
Yep, and I think that's the update that we can put on today, is no action required at this, is just make it, yep. And then that'll just have the date. And then when we see this again, we can see what new information has come along. Okay. So that takes care of a few. So that takes care of number four on, I'm just writing that down. Yep. Number four, number seven, number eleven. Got it. Okay. So I put this at number five, community sign project. We had discussions about a community sign and it says here, see info and description more info needed on cost, maintenance and ownership. Any comments from council? Councillor Parkinson?
Through you, your worship. I thought that when the presentation was given to council, that we did have a couple of locations that were pointed out and that there was a cost associated with it all. I don't, I don't know if you kept the information from the presentation.
Well, staff would have whatever information that was provided, going back to a four of eleven.
I don't, your worship, I don't recall the presentation myself, but we probably have information on the follow-up. But I remember a portion of dialogue was with regards to the inability for us to put a sign of that nature because we have no property in that area and the right of way belongs to the MOT. And it was brief discussion with them and they weren't really supportive of having a sign. So it really, it really never gained any traction after that. And there's also a cost associated as well.
That was for the Connie Road location.
That's correct.
We don't have any property there that we can put it on. So that sort of removes that piece. And I recall council wanting it centralized and then in terms of where it goes.
Right.
Councillor Parkinson?
And so that would be, I think that was, presentation was here and it was also with the arts committee, when we had the arts committee. And they had the design of the sign and what it was to look like. And I thought that two of the other locations were going to be, one was going to be by where the museum is, where the Welcome to Suk sign is, as I recall, or down at the park here. I'm not sure.
Would council like to invite Ms. Lures to speak on this? Okay. Ms. Lures, maybe if you want, since we're here and you're here.
Thank you. Actually, this has come to the forefront again. Rotary's really interested and wants to take it on, to do this. And Connie, the Connie Road area was that the land is owned by someone else and district would have to purchase it and that sort of thing. Initially, under the Arts and Beautification, the budget was about ten thousand dollars because we were looking at private people coming forward and artisans coming and carving the posts. So that was costly. But after that, I did talk with Landmark and all-inclusive with the sign, with the four by eight sign, two-sided and the carving, it was around two thousand dollars they were going to do it. That was last year, I think, maybe I talked with them, I can't remember. But there was that site and also I'd met with staff, with Gerard LeBlanc at that time. And another location that we looked at was in front of the school, the property that the district now looks after between Edward Millen's Road and the highway. And there was enough room in there too, to put the sign. So there are a couple of options. And then there was the hydro and that sort of thing. But I am going to make a presentation again to Rotary, we're talking about it. So there's still a possibility of that happening and it's a community events sign. And also was for the district to put their signs up as well that weren't statutory, statutory things that you had to put in the paper. And also if fire hazard, fire rating could be, be on there, road closures. So it was an all-inclusive community sign. And then it was going to carry through with the other signs in Suk, because it's a sign that we don't have yet here at the park, at John Phillips, that the signs, signs would all be similar, so we, we would have a, a theme going through Suk with these four by, I think there are twelve by twelve pillars that were carved, Suk Wild by Nature was to be on there. And it was, and in between, it was going to have pictures of Suk or events, different, you know, what's wild by nature and what'd be happening. Like some Suk Fine Arts would have pictures of the Suk Fine Arts and that kind of thing.
Okay, so we'll, we'll wait for, to hear from
Yes.
the Rotary then?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So thank you very much, Ms. Lures, for that. I appreciate that. Okay, so wait for... Okay, Alternative Housing Forum. Says to budget in twenty eighteen.
I, I didn't...
Councillor Casper?
Yeah, when, when I was, brought this forward, I had discussions with our CAO at the time and it was suggested that we sort of hold off on doing this because of the timing. So, you know, I, I, I think it would be an important thing to do because, you know, the term affordable housing can mean a lot to everybody, but I think the district seriously has to look at alternate forms of housing because they're allowing container housing in a number of jurisdictions. If it's properly engineered, serviced, it can look good. That's one form of housing. There's provisions of having smaller, smaller houses on, on properties and maybe that's something that, that we should consider. I had a, a very detailed discussion with councillor Alto from City Victoria and she's, had agreed to actually come out and speak at, at a forum because she's done a lot of work and, and investigation, what they've done in Portland and Oregon. So, you know, I, I, I still think something perhaps should be done. I'm open to suggestions because I brought it forward. But I think, you know, maybe the more heads that get together on this, we could come up with some.
Yep, I totally agree. I think so as well. Councillor Loggins?
I agree. It's a huge priority, I think, out of the list of things we have here. That would be one that's most important to me and I'm grateful that councillor Casper brought that forward. At the very least, I would say we make it part of one of your public forums if we can, but if we're able to build it into the budget and create its own forum and, and invite other councillors and, and everyone to have that discussion, I think it'd be really important. And, and I think we could actually come up with, there's no reason why we can't come up with actionable items from that forum.
And, and if I may, you know, we are, we are allowing certain things to be done in our municipality that others aren't doing. So there's an opportunity for us to showcase some things that, that we've done, you know, the cottage housing, this type of thing. In Vancouver, they, they, they brought in laneway housing, which, which we haven't fully adopted, but, but we do allow for the standalone suites. And, and so, you know, maybe there's some alternatives that we can bring in. I spoke to an associate professor at SFU and had a discussion about the work that this individual done over there. And we didn't come to an agreement on coming over, but, but there may be an opportunity to bring somebody from the Lower Mainland to actually give a different perspective too. And, you know, I've been to, and I think the mayor's been to, a number of affordable housing forums that have been conducted by the CRD, but, but it's very all-inclusive. No one is talking about alternative forms of housing, something that's outside the box. And I don't mean that as a pun, but, but it's just that I think that, that if we can find a way to make it happen, not in a huge scale, but maybe a one-day workshop or seminar, bring in some guest speakers, whether do it at the hotel, along those lines, and, and just do it properly and right. And then invite to see if there's... And then invite to see if there's some manufacturers that are either in Vancouver or in Washington State. And I've done some research, some of them actually like coming to these types of events, so they can showcase what they've produced. So there might be an opportunity there, so.
Yep, no, I think the timing's perfect. It says to budget 2018. So I think with UBCM just around the corner, there's a way to get some more contact information. We can put an actual number into the budget, and then look for something like early in the year. And I agree, it should be a one-day forum, but I'd like to see its focus on Suk specifically, as opposed to, here's a very larger, here it's like, okay, here's some things to do here. And there has been times where people who do manufacture the homes are more than willing to bring them out, and we could invite them to have them there as part of it all. So I think that's good. I mean, the Health Summit that we had, not this year, the year before, we had about 5,000 in the budget. I think we would need a little bit more for this, just to draw in. But we'll see, I think there's time between now and, and budget deliberations, so this is, this is good. I think we just keep it active as it is there.
I could probably say this another time, but I'll just quickly say it. If we can also build into this forum, the piece that our staff did on community nodes, that might be a good addition to it and see where we can fit some things in.
Because I think there's, there's plenty of time to plan it from there. Okay, Counselor Pearson?
Yes, and I just want to capture again what, what Counselor Loggins is, is headed to, is that there has to be a link between affordable housing, alternative housing, and our OCP. We have to create another zone, or potentially discuss creating, is what I mean. It's all got to be part of that same discussion, so the, the, the planning and zoning piece has to be integral to this as well. Because there has to, if there has to be an appetite from a developer to want to go into this, this type of affordable housing, or even the district itself, you know, I mean, there's all kinds of cool alternatives. But we also have to have mention of that in our OCP, so we can't leave that piece out. Thank you.
Torusiu?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Just a reminder to council that the OCP is now on hold, as the planner in charge of the OCP is now back on planning duties due to a staff, staff leaving. So during our 2015, or 2018 five-year budget deliberations, we will be bringing that back in front of council, as well as the forum for alternative housing. We'll put a budget number to that, and council can decide where in the priorities that lies.
Yep, sounds good. Okay. Number eight, this is from the Suk Community, Suk Community, something of arts council. I can't remember what the second C is. They requested a, to council to create a heritage bylaw, and I think that's on the list. Counselor Parkinson?
I would think that this could go into the OCP as well, for the bylaw.
As part of the, a part of OCP?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Good? Okay. So I'll just make part of OCP. The second one was to examine possible grants and funding opportunities for the refurbishment of the community center, provide a report to council. It says requires council direction staff resource grant application. Counselor Loggins?
Thanks. I did ask for clarification from staff for this, because it, I was confused about the community center bit, because we don't have a community center, and we have to be really careful of that language, I think. So I think they were looking at just rewriting that a bit to reflect. I don't have the, yeah, it should be the community hall. Sorry, I was just trying to pull up the email, but it might be too.
Thank you, through your worship to Counselor Loggins, we will change that to community hall. It is important to note that the Community Association chose not to move forward with the heritage grant, that they had an opportunity to go for, so we, we are still looking for direction, as is, I think, council is a little confused, is, or not confused, but where are we going to go with respect to a community center? Do we need one, don't we? And there's differing opinions amongst various groups in our community. And so this is an outstanding resolution of council, and staff are asking for council, like, what do you want us to do here?
But in this case, if it's for the community hall, it would be up to the Suk Community Association to work with us, as opposed to us stepping over them and refurbishing your hall.
And that's the direction we're looking for.
Counselor Ray?
Yes, your worship, I think this goes back, I think this goes back to the public referendum question, right? So I think that was one of the options, was looking at refurbishing. It was from the prior council, in terms of the money that would go into developing those resources. So it, it wasn't all just the community center, and it wasn't all about building, a new building either. It was just whether or not the community wanted to see us go forward with it. So this was just one of the options. That's from the prior council.
Counselor Parkinson?
Through you, your worship. So does that mean that staff would not be looking into grants for them? And that it would be put to the back of the, the list as no action required at this time? Is that what you mean?
I'm, I'm sorry, are you speaking to me?
Yeah.
No, no, I was just trying to put it back in context about looking at funding to refurbish the community hall. That was all part of a bigger discussion in our last council.
Through you, your worship, with, with the community hall and staff being overworked, and not enough staff right now, I would think that we would put that towards the back, and maybe help them find a person who would sit on their committee that is a grant writer, like a number of the other committees all have in Suk. Museum has a grant writer, the Arts Council has a grant writer. So maybe we can find, or they can find someone to sit on their committee that knows how to write grants, somewhere to look for them.
Counselor Loggins?
I just want to clarify about the community center vision. And that was that there, we were presented with a, a list of different options, but really there was only two options. One, three, one do nothing, I guess, could be the third option. The second, to build, which is not feasible. And the third was not to support the community hall, but to support several different initiatives throughout the community to provide an, a community center service through multiple facets, I guess. The community hall being one of them. So I guess I just want to clarify that, because we do have $150,000 in the budget, that $150,000 is not, as, from the information I gathered from the community over five years, it's not for one organization, it's for multiple things. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. So at this point, I think no action, but if we hear of anything, we'll pass it along. Does that work for everyone? Counselor Casper, like Counselor Casper did?
Well, we, it, it might be a good idea that if we contacted the Community Association and find out what, 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 what they would think should happen. Because there was a plebiscite, and it kind of gave a pretty clear direction that there should be some action along this front. And then, then a committee was formed, and, and then a lot of people got involved. But, but my sense, from the different people I've talked to, is that, that one of the most common themes for facilities that could accommodate a multitude of uses was the community hall. That's an existing structure, and, you know, whether the debate is, is, is it feasible in cost? Well, it's a lot cheaper than building brand-new. So, you know, I, I, you know, I'd at least want to talk to a potential partner before we decide to do nothing.
No, right, okay, that's why we're having this. I'll pass it to Counselor Loggins, because she did sit on the committee and was there for when the final report to council came forward.
I sat on the committee, and I, I was part of, I didn't just talk to community members. I've spoken to about 600 people individually about this over many, many years. And I'm actually really upset that this message hasn't gotten through to council yet, because the community hall cannot currently, or with a renovation, support anything more than it does right now. So there, well, they're not to the extent of what we need for a community center. So they need renovations to put in a new kitchen and get more things there. They need to move walls around and create more space, and utilize more space appropriately. But that hall has a lot of things going on there, a lot of great things going on there. And we can't displace organizations, because there's nowhere for them to go. We have more organizations that need, like, if we had a second community hall, that would be great. But the capacity of the community hall is not such that it could accommodate what we need for a community center. So it does need a renovation, and that would be a very important piece of the community center vibe that we need to happen in the community, but it does not fill the gap that we have. And with our community growing, that gap's getting bigger and bigger every day.
So there's two pieces to this. Refurbish the hall and build another facility.
Well, that was, those were the other options, if you will, in that report that we were given, was create more storage space at our, at our yard.
There was a number of things.
And open up opportunities, or support organizations in opening opportunities for meeting spaces. Work with the school district to have them build another gym, but put pressure on them to get one in the community. So there are all these little pieces that need to get done. This is probably the most important one. And, and if we can support the Community Association in getting this done, it would, it would fill a huge piece of that gap, but it definitely is not, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not enough.
It's not enough. I agree with you there. Okay, so what, staff is looking for direction on what council would like to do. So I see that there's still some outstanding. Counselor Parkinson?
Through you, through you, your worship, to the CAO, why didn't the community hall go through with the heritage grant? I'm not sure what that was, or what it was for, or how much they were asking for. And did they require our help to get that?
No, through your worship to Counselor Parkinson, my belief is that getting the heritage designation would severely limit their ability to update the building to current standards with respect to electrical and all the rest of it. So the grant would have been helpful, but it wouldn't have done what they needed to do at that building in order to serve the needs of the community.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm looking to council here in terms of, so that we can provide some clarity over to staff. I'll be calling for a public input pretty shortly here. I just would like to finish off this point. Thank you.
If I may, well, perhaps we could just do a follow-up with the Community Association, either through our representative liaison person with the Community Association, or directly to the Board of Directors, that we do have this outstanding issue. And that, you know, we, we're interested in having a discussion as to, you know, do, do they want us to proceed with something? Because in order for us to proceed, there would have to be a plan, there would have to be a budget, and there'd have to go to referendum.
Yep.
You know, to get the money, you know, because it's not just going to fall off trees.
Yeah, and, and thank you, Counselor Casper, and through your worship. These are resolutions that are made by council, and so we're not asking council to debate the issues. What we're asking for is, is for council to let us know. Like, the, the Community Association didn't apply for the grant. And so now staff is saying to council, this is a resolution that you made, now what? Now, do you want to withdraw the resolution, keep it on, put it to the back of the list, the top of the list, the middle of the list? How important is this for you? I understand it's incredibly important for the community. And at the direction of council, as Counselor Casper said, we need a plan from the community organizer, you know, we need a plan, we need a budget, we need resources and staff attached to it in order to move this ball along. And currently, we don't have that. So if council wants to say, put that as a priority, as part of 2018 budget deliberations in our five-year plan, we're happy to do so.
Okay, so I think the, the description is what still stands. That staff examine possible grants and funding opportunities for refurbishment of the community hall, provide a report to council, and just follow up with the, get an update from the Suk Community Association, and bring it back at budget time. We have gone to referendum on this and got overwhelming support for it, so where are we at with it? Okay, they didn't apply for one particular grant that fell under, under a certain category, so then, okay. Then we keep looking. That one grant wasn't part of, it wasn't a condition, like, provided that this heritage piece remain. They, there was an opportunity, and I understand why it wasn't pursued now with that context, but let's keep moving on and see what comes of it.
And your worship, just as a reminder, normally with grants, we need matching funds from the district. So it really depends on the grant opportunity, how much is available, and how much council's willing to put up as matching funds. So we can continue to explore opportunities, for sure. But, but we need to make that part of the budget deliberations. If we do find a grant opportunity, then where are the matching funds coming from?
And if there is no grant, then what we want to do is just, and I think if we do something where it goes to another referendum, then we need to be prepared, get our ducks in order so that we do that. We did it the first time, but it was so, do you want us to continue working on this? Yes, that in a, in a sense was what the ask was at the time, and so we, we're not delivering well on that. Counselor Loggins?
I would absolutely say that this is a priority. We had a referendum on it. We have funds set aside for it. We have tons of people in the community who need this. The Community Association needs this. And they service so many organizations. I think it's, this should be one, to me, this is the most important one we have in here.
Yep, I agree with Counselor Loggins. Okay, next. Yep, what time is it? Okay, all right, we'll get some public input on where, on just where, well, where we're at, and if there's anything that are in the pages for us to consider as well. So I'd like to invite any member of the public forward at this time.
Okay, I'd like to speak to what you were just talking about with the community hall.
Ms. Lures, sorry, formality, you just still need to
5526 Suk Road, Ellen Lures.
Introduce yourself, thank you.
On this, whatever it was handed out, which is very difficult to read, and, and please, next time, if the font could be changed so that someone can read it without a magnifying glass. But it does say in, 2015 August 31, to, to, no, no, wait a minute. 2015, a third of the ninth. Moved and seconded to endorse establishment of the following committees, and direct staff to direct terms of reference for the committees for council approval. And one of those was the Parks and Trails Advisory, and the other was the Community Grant Review. No, no, I'm sorry. Where is it? Well, it, well, that's the thing, it's, it's not, this is not lined up with this, or. So it was to, to put the committee, the community center committee, to establish those committees. But nowhere, I looked through this whole thing, and nowhere does it say that the committees were to stand down. So I wonder where that resolution was, or where that motion was passed to have the committees stand down in the first place. That is what's happened, is this has not been finished. We were not finished, we were coming to a conclusion, we were coming to the point, we talked with the Parks Committee. We were coming together, because there was all the different issues. As Counselor Loggins has said, there was all the different parts that were coming together. And we had been talking to each other, but we hadn't had the opportunity to sit down and work it out together, because there was plans forming from all the information that we gathered, and it was never finished. And that's, it can't be finished at council, because you don't have the information that we have gathered. And we met, we met with different group committees. And we met, we met with different group committees, subcommittees, every week. There was a lot of work went into this. And, and I don't know why it was just shut down, and it made a lot of people frustrated and angry because we were coming to a point that we could actually work something out to establish what we're talking about, all the nodes, bringing them all together, to try to, to establish how these committees could work together with the community hall as well. And we were looking, we needed direction. There were some things that had to happen with the community hall. There has to be an architect's, something or other, that has to, has to be established first before they can do any work. And so, those are the things, there was, there were some recommendations that we were ready to make that council could then have worked with. And I think it, it behooves you to bring those committees back and that those committees finish their work. Then you will have the conclusion. Then you'll know what it is that the community needs and how we can do it. There was a lot of good people on those committees. There are people that are well-established. We had four people from the Sioux Community Association in our committee. So, there was a lot of people with a lot of knowledge there. And a lot more knowledge than what's at the council right now because they've been here and been involved in it a long time. So, I would say that if you want to bring that to a conclusion, the best way is to bring the committees back. Going back to alternative housing forum, I think that's a good idea to have a forum on that because there's, there are different alternatives around and about that we could, that we should be looking at. We have to think outside of the box. The economy is changing drastically. Housing costs are out of control. We hear it all the time. Somebody just dropped into our place today again, left New West, couldn't afford to look from New West all the way out to Chilowack, couldn't find anything to purchase. They, they came here. So, and people are not looking just for tiny houses or tiny, they're looking for land. They're looking for land to live. So, we have to really talk about what we're doing, and that's OCP information. And I think some of your other information that you were talking about is OCP information too. Oh, let's see, what was the other one that I saw? Oh, recommendation for climate action change, opportunities for local composting and that sort of thing. I agree, that should be done by individuals. That should be private enterprise. But the OCP language should allow that to happen within, and that's, that's an OCP thing that should be put in there so that, the language is there so people can do it. With the correspondence, the idea, with the firearms regulation bylaw, I believe when that bylaw came forward, it was just ridiculous because there were so many things that even a policeman couldn't shoot his gun off in this. And I do know they have to do that sometimes. They usually shoot a wounded deer or whatever, but it wouldn't allow them to do it. So, that really has to be reviewed. And we have a federal and provincial firearms bylaw, and I think that should be looked at. And before there's anything done with bow and arrow, there should be farmers, should be part of that discussion because it's a serious issue with wildlife in this area and especially with deer. If you want to have farmers, if you want to have food, and we saw what happened in Houston, I mean, devastation can happen anywhere, so there is no food. So, we have to make sure that we protect the farmers and the farmland. And I guess that's, that's it for now. Thank you.
To our CAO, or sorry, is there any other members of the public?
Rob Pierce, 2407 Poplar. I hate rules, bylaws, but I understand we've got to have them. But why are we making more when we don't even look after the ones that we have? You know, we've put six bears down, and I know this isn't the forum to talk about it, but I hear you guys talking about, "We've got to amend this bylaw. We've got to do that." We've put six bears down in Sioux. We've moved them to their backyard. We take away their food. We put out the garbage early, and then we shoot them for that. You know, the crossbows and bow hunting. From what I understand on Whiffen Spit, that was the guy with the Christmas tree farm was getting pissed off, so we hired the natives to shoot the deer on his land. That's the story that I've heard. I don't know anymore about it, you know. But why do we have these rules if we don't have the resources to enforce them? I think that's the bigger issue.
I would like to share that one year Sioux put down 30 bears. I know, I know that six is really bad, but it's an improvement from the 30 that we were at about four or five years ago. I totally hear what you're saying, and that's why we need to consider what we're always, when we adopt bylaws, how the other side of its enforcement. But we are improving when it comes to bear and protection of bear habitat.
Ellen Lurs, 5526 Sioux Road. I think the OCP review should be done now. I don't think that is something should be put off. We're a growing community and growing quickly. And every time development comes forward, we're changing OCP, we're changing zoning. We haven't had discussion from, from the public, what it is that they want, what it is, what our community, what they want our community to look like. Are we going to double lane? Are we going to just, or are we going to put in another road? Or what are we going to do? Are we going to just all be sitting in, in traffic for an hour every day to travel here and to? So, we need to have that discussion. The OCP review has to come first before we do any more changes. We keep changing the OCP. We keep changing the zoning and say, "This doesn't match with that." And, and some of the zonings are so ridiculous, the language in some of them is ridiculous. For, for one zone, you can do, like I think that one that we did with Rob, Rob Peters. Well, this is about the OCP. I'm just using this as an example. The example where we, he could, he could do anything from have a garage to have a church in that, in that zone. We have to look at what we're doing. We have to review that and make sure it works because otherwise council can't function properly. We can't function properly. The staff can't function because they look at something and go, "Oh, well, you can't do this. You can't do that." But, but you can do this. It doesn't make any sense. So, they don't know what zone to put it in or either. So, the review has to come first. Please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are, is there any other members of the public that would like to speak at this time? Nope. Okay. To our staff, please.
Thank you, your worship. Just to point a clarification with response to Ms. Lur's concern that there wasn't a resolution passed with respect to the committees. If you take a look at the 2015 Resolutions, number 30, it speaks to the committees. And, excuse me, it's a fairly long resolution, so I won't bother reading it, but it is there. And I would like to point Ms. Lur's to that. Senator, currently, we're looking at the active or the incomplete resolutions. If you go to the completed, your appendix C, page 14 of 64 at the bottom, Resolution Number 30. It says, "R.A. Three Council Committee and Liaison Appointments, 2015-03-09."
Okay, that one, that looks at establishing them. But not to, the question that Ms. Lur has was a resolution that disbanded the committees or dissolved the committees. Counselor Ray, please.
Yes, your worship. I believe those committees were two years and were supposed to end at the end of 2016. So, I don't think a resolution was required, but I stand, I stand to be corrected.
The terms were initially for one year. And that, those terms of references were adopted at each committee itself at the very inaugural meetings. Our policy has that council, members of the public can't sit for longer than two years. So, I think that's the policy that prevails. Counselor Loggins, did you have anything further?
I was just going to say that it was a term, and that's why it did end, and that committee ended on term. However, I do agree with Ms. Lur's that there was lots of unfinished business in terms of the terms of reference for that committee. And it would be great to see that move forward in some fashion, especially if we can make the community center facilities issue a priority.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, we are moving on to item 12, I believe. No, pardon me. Number 10, Development Variance Permit. Report on options to streamline the development permit process is actively being dealt with by the development workshops. The second one being held tomorrow. Number 12, Bylaw, 648 Development Permit Delegation Bylaw. Staff are asked to review the report and provide alternative options to council at a future meeting. So, are we just waiting for?
We're waiting for the workshops to finish to inform this work.
So, I'll put development workshops there. Okay. And delinquent property taxes on mobile homes. I thought this was done. Counsel received a report entitled, "Delinquent Property Taxes on Mobile Homes", from the Director of Finances for Information. That staff provide specific follow-up to council on each file item at a later date on how to perceive delinquent property taxes on mobile homes. I thought, isn't this active leaping happening or?
To you, your worship. We did produce a report that had the options, I believe, at that time. And, you know, there are various options, and they're none of them that pleasant to go through. And we just haven't done anything with them. It's just, we can keep coming forward with the list every year if council would like. They don't form part of the tax sale, so they don't ever appear in, in any of that publication. So, it just would be a report for information. And if council was wanting any further action taken by staff, that we could do that as well. But so far, we haven't really brought the issue back, other than that one report back in.
So, we'll just get the report on an annual basis? Okay. So, I'll put a notice with staff then. So, we have the next one. There's an RFQ going out shortly. It's from the Parks and Trails Advisory Committee. The council allocate funds in the 2017 to 201 financial plan to conduct a feasibility study for pedestrian crossing, bridge crossing from Sun Rivers to Mamute Creek Trail to the Sioux District land or to the newly acquired Seapark Land next to Journey Middle School. And so, that is actively going out. So, we'll just wait to hear back on that. Counselor Parkinson?
So, would that just be through staff seeing as there's no Parks and Trails Committee?
Well, that was the recommendation from the committee. So, then I think council would have endorsed it, and now it's, that's the action that staff has taken. So, then it'll come back to council once the RFQ finishes, correct? Yes, it'll come back to council when the RFQ closes. Does that answer your question? Okay. The next one is that council direct staff to investigate cost. This is also from the Parks and Trails Advisory Committee. Direct staff to investigate is costs associated with pedestrian improvements on Sioux River Road. And council direct staff to investigate connectivity in the downtown core. So, staff to provide a list of sidewalks that have been constructed, working with the MOT on a sidewalk between Autarpoy and Whiffen Spit. So, we'll just wait to hear back from staff. Council proposed road closure and disposition of Sioux Road right-of-way. Council direct staff to proceed with the preparation of a bylaw to close and remove the highway dedication, dispose of the undeveloped Sioux Road right-of-way adjacent to 6290, 6283. The road is, is being closed, is still being owned by the province, waiting for vesting order before can proceed. So, we're just waiting on other parties then. Next one, sale of excess road right-of-way in Maple Park Terrace. Waiting for information from the applicant. So, we'll just wait. Information handling and privacy policy. It's quite long. You can see that there, in-camera items being, are being released. Can create a project for doing same with historical items. An application must be made. Anything to add there? It's just the FOI process? Counselor Ray or to our CAO?
If, if I may, your worship, there was, if you take a look at the last bullet, discuss, there was a discussion of having a Freedom of Information Day where the public could make requests for information without application forms or fees. This is all part of provincial legislation, so we needed to make sure that council was aware that, given it's provincial legislation, that's not something we can entertain. But staff are certainly responsive to FOI requests when they come in.
Okay. Counselor Casper?
Yeah, you know, I, I agree that, yes, it's all provincial legislation, but we also set a fee structure. It's our decision to set a fee structure. The province doesn't dictate that to us. So, you know, the reason I spoke on this is that, you know, I think, in particular, we have historical in-camera documents that have never been released publicly that have no harm to the district if they were released or any other parties. And, and, and I think that it's important that we are allowed, after 10 years, to release in-camera information with no repercussions whatsoever. So, so, I think that, that we've got a plethora of stuff that's buried in vaults. And I think the public has a right to know what previous councils were up to behind closed doors that was never disclosed, when all the matters that they dealt with had been put to bed. So, I just think that, you know, it's, it's public discourse. It's, it's sharing of information. And, and I honestly feel that, that the less bureaucratic process we put the public through to give out information, the better job we're doing as an organization and the better service we're providing to the public. Maybe an inconvenience to staff, but you know what? We're here to serve the public. And so, I am strongly adamant about getting more information out to the public in the less cumbersome, burdensome process feasible.
Okay, so, that's clarifying your rise in report on current in-camera as well as releasing order. Okay.
So, you know, really, and I'm going to harp on this till my last days as holding public office. It shouldn't come as a surprise. I talked about this the very first time I got elected to council. And that was in 2005 and '06. So, I think that the more information we get out to the public, the better off we are. And we're not subject to criticism, and I think that's a good thing in this day and age. So, I'll leave it at that.
Good. Thank you very much for that clarification. I appreciate it. To our CAO, please.
Thank you, your worship, through the Counselor Casper. Staff are more than happy to provide historical information to the public. We will put a request for resources in the 2018 five-year financial plan to do so.
Okay. Counselor Ray? Make it a committee. Your microphone. Microphone. Okay.
I'll leave it.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ray?
Yes, your worship. I guess I differ in opinion than my colleague, Counselor Casper. I think anytime you're expecting staff to go through documents and electronic documents and files, and it's going to take manpower. And, you know, I have no difficulty when there's time and when there's resources to do it. But I don't think the staff need this pressure at this point in time. There's enough on the plate for the next coming year.
Okay. So, I think enough said on that. Okay. Parks and Trails Advisory Recommendations. There's another one here. Council refer the following items to the Community Development Committee. So, these, this committee never formed. There's a number of things here. So, that's where they were to come to council. There was a few things, a public consultation to examine locations for an off-leash dog park, develop a policy that outlines a process to follow when namesake parts and trails, and to provide a report to council. So, there's two outstanding items there. And it was to go to the committee that didn't form, so in this case, they should just come to council. in this case, they should just come to council. That's sort of what I said at the time, early in the year, that anything would come to a committee of the whole. Appointment of Board of Variance. We're still waiting for someone to take that position. So that's ongoing. We had something here on the elevator, letter received from a member of the public about a replacement elevator. And it seems that the existing elevator was serviced and is being regularly maintained. And it seems to be working periodically. Door opens. Like, it just sort of moves on its own. I don't know why it does that. It's a little creepy sometimes. But otherwise, I suppose it's functioning as it should. It's actually a lift. It's not an elevator. I think that's where, for the two floors or for the floors that it serviced, that's probably why it was put in the way it is. It's not technically an elevator where it has the pulley system and/or the hydraulics to move it. It's a lift. So it's something, but I guess here it's 50 grand if we wanted an elevator in. So we can talk about that at budget time. Waste Management Bylaw. There was to be a report to the Protective Services Committee regarding a draft Waste Management Bylaw for recommendation to council. Mayor Tate said the district wants to focus on education of residents. We only have one bylaw enforcement officer, and the best way is to work for the public. So there was a delegation, I believe, at that meeting that asked where this bylaw was. So that was the comment that I made at the time, unless council would like to see a bylaw come forward at some point. Otherwise, I think the education piece is our approach until we hire more bylaw enforcement Counselor Casper?
Was this about people putting their garbage cans out?
Yeah, and putting a bylaw.
So I agree with what you're saying. Education, that's critical. Because, you know, I don't think a bylaw is going to do anything whatsoever. But if we have to clean up garbage, and we know who the offending party is, well, then we have the power to bill them, put it on their tax notice. That's a clear direction. That speaks volumes compared to a piece of paper that's called a bylaw.
Yeah. Oh, I agree.
And if there's garbage out in the street because people aren't thinking about when they put the garbage out, and animals get in there and tear the neighborhood apart, well, then, if there's a cost, then we'll find out, in my opinion, find out who did it and bill them. Put it on their taxes. That'll smarten people up. They won't do it again.
No, that sounds good. And then we have one from Bill Wilson regarding sewer placement for 6625. Staff to provide a report. And staff are still working to contact Mr. Wilson. So we'll just wait to hear more about that. So that, I believe, takes us to the end of this. Oh, no, there's more. Sort of starting over in the next section. So these are all in progress with various dates. So do we keep punching through these?
These are 2017.
These are 2017 outstanding.
No, we did just did 2016 outstanding.
I see. These are 2017 outstanding. Got it. Okay.
One way council may wish to approach the in-progress items is to know that they're in progress and then focus on the other ones where we're needing direction.
Okay. That's sort of what I thought. Because a lot of these are, I'll just look for where it says that. So some of these here, I'm looking for anything that is requiring of council direction. So number six, in progress, Request for Payment for Ad Space for Survey Regarding Healthcare Services. Sioux support Sioux Pocket News in the Advertising Budget for the CAO District of Sioux. Motion 2017-167? Or, that council supports Sioux Pocket for the Advertising Budget for the District of Sioux. That council defer the motion regarding the Pocket News until additional information is from the Sioux CAO's Communication Strategy. So this here is requiring council direction.
I'm sorry, if I may, your worship, through to council in general. I'm going to be adding a bit to the CAO Communication Strategy. So perhaps we can defer this one until the full strategy in draft form comes back to council.
Do you know when that'll be? Just so we have a date.
I'm looking at October, late October, early November.
October 20, okay. October 2017. Okay. The Tellus mural, this came forward, and it's about doing a mural on the Tellus Building. And then we, oh, that's in progress. Okay. So never mind. In progress, in progress. Number 14, Lot A Fire Prevention. So that's in works. That's been, we dealt with that at the special meeting.
Policy.
Oh, pardon me, number 14. So that one was tabled. That's the correspondence policy. And so now with our new corporate officer, that policy is going to be, we'll expect it back at some point. I'll talk to the corporate officer about some issues. We had a previous, short conversation about it, and just where my confusion with it lied and why it was tabled. But we can have further conversation about that. Jeez. Okay. In work. That just came right out of you. The correspondence policy. That's the one that I just found a bit overwhelming at the time. Okay.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, the financial plan, the dog park. Okay. That council directs staff to write a report on the feasibility of locations for a dog park, including options for site requirements, 2018 implications and process. And that the council directs staff to notify the community associating the district is interested in the used fencing from the soccer fields. So we do have a report on the dog park in different locations. That was done before. I was on that task force along with Counselor Pearson. And then the fencing, I thought we agreed that we wanted to take and have at the yard. Counselor Ray?
Yes, thank you, your worship. This was just a response to an item that I put ahead on the agenda about looking at a possible site right beside the fire department.
Okay.
And so just as adding another site to the previous report. And that the fencing would certainly reduce the cost. Because when we looked at the dog park resolution from the previous council, one of the prohibitive factors was the cost of the fence. And so in my discussions with the Sioux Community Association, as they're putting in the new fields, they offered the fencing. So it was just another idea, another place that possibly a dog park could go. And that we could cover it with the fencing, because that was the cost.
So do we have that fencing now? Because that field is well under construction.
Your worship, we don't have the fencing yet.
It's still there?
As far as I know, it is, yes.
Okay.
If I can, your worship. They were going to be using it until certain sections were done. And then once they were finished, which they thought would be the spring of 2018.
Okay. So we, okay. So I think budget discussion. Counselor Loggins?
I do have a solution that wouldn't require much of a budget at all.
Oh, what's that?
And I probably get harassed for saying this, but.
I hope not. Sounds.
I haven't been yet. Right now, and just bear with me, everyone, the park right over here is used as an off-leash dog park, similar to that of Dallas Road.
John Phillips.
Yes. Yeah. And I know we did initially approach this as a fenced area that's off-leash, where dogs can play together and learn social skills together, which would make all the dogs here a bit better, better off. And that does happen in this park. It's a nice wide-open space. You can walk your dog with a leash, without a leash. I think if we just keep it as it is, without a leash, add one more garbage bin, add two more dog bag areas at the other two garbage bins, one of detentress, problem solved.
It's kind of like the spit. In a sense, there's dogs off-leash there often, too. I think our bylaw is your dog is to be under control.
Apologies, your worship. Our bylaw says that your dog must be under effective control of the owner. And it doesn't necessarily, it does not specify whether it's on leash or off-leash. So the position of staff on this matter is that every single park we have is off-leash or on-leash. You have to have your dog under effective control.
Right. Okay.
Your worship, this is news to me about any plans for a dog park next to the fire hall. As far as, you know, any implications that I can immediately think of is when we use that spot for a lot of our pump testing and hose testing. So we're throwing water on a weekly basis up in that area. Our sirens and noises that we make on a daily basis, as well as increased traffic where the volunteers responded to actually that door or the actual driveway into the fire hall is just a concern. And I haven't seen that report myself either. No, so just a comment from the fire department.
Back to Counselor Ray?
Yeah. It wasn't an official report. It was just an idea that was put out. There was more push in social media about getting back to a dog park. And I think it's actually, people are wanting a place that's fenced so that they can let their dogs off-leash. Because they normally wouldn't let them off-leash, and it was just somewhere where to go. But as long as it's back on the table at some point, hopefully, we can find a place. It's just that the property beside the fire hall is owned by the district. So it was an issue of cost.
So just leave it with the budget conversation? Because part of it, this came forward as there was a petition. There was a series of things. Horseshoes, bike park, and a dog park. And they all took quite some time to be resolved. The horseshoe one finally got resolved. The bike park was proposed for John Phillips, and then it moved over to Seapark, and that's been resolved. And then next in the queue was the dog park. And then the area Pine Park Place was looked at, which didn't go over well with the residents. So then, and then there's no parking. So you would have to drive to it or find parking. So what about those that aren't able to walk greater distances? And how would they get their dogs? So that's where this came up. And so that's where it's always sort of moved around. It just hasn't let, the other, out of those three things, two had been solved, and the one remained outstanding.
Yeah. And I agree. I would love to see a fenced area. And one of the best dog parks I saw was up in Cobble Hill, I think. And it's all gravelled. So I feel like that has, it kind of creates a sense of more ownership of picking up your dog's waste. I think when it's more visible like that, and not hidden off in a grassy bush or anything, and it has nice benches and, you know, tree areas. And I think that it would be wonderful if we could get that fencing and actually put it in. Again, just John Phillips Park is already used that way. So if we can put it even around the trees, it's away from the houses. If that's the way we want to go during budget deliberations, I think that would be great. So I'd keep it in there for that.
Okay. So budget it is. Next, let's see here. Was that it? Wowzers. So, because these are completed, or they're on, oh, okay. So comments from council on this? Are there any other pieces that you would like to add? One thing that I've thought about is this committee piece in terms of what to do. And then I thought, why am I continually thinking about this? So what I would like to do is put it out to members of council. If there's something that you feel that needs to be addressed by committee, then you have UBC, UBCM coming up. There's an opportunity to network with your peers. You have this information here to see if there's things that need to be delved into a bit more. Many of you are having ongoing conversations with members of the public. So why not take the next month? And then sort of as we look at our priorities and look at the budget, then come back with an idea on a committee that you feel you would like to go. Because there's been several rounds where I put committees forward, and they don't necessarily gain appetite or interest by members of council. So why am I forcing a committee on you that you don't want to sit on? So why not, if, I'll leave it with you. And then you can come back and come up with a committee that you would like to chair and to put forward if it's something that you feel is, that you'd like to delve into further. I just sort of keep throwing it out there. Why not form this or that? But it's really, this is a joint initiative. My hands are full with the work that I have, certainly when it comes to healthcare and other advocacy work. So I can't sit on any other committees. It's like, if I form them, I almost feel obligated. If no one else sits on them, then I need to sit on them. And it's just impossible to do that. There's just not enough hours in my day. So I'll leave it with the rest of you to come forward with an idea. And then we can put forward the public advertising and see what is needed for staff resource, if any, and take it from there. But looking ahead, we do want, we had agreed that, for example, Community in Blooms should be every other year. So next year, what is that going to look like? How will we look at doing that? It's in the budget financial plan. So what is the plan for that? There's other ideas that have been floating around and to go from there. But I think just forming a committee, because I thought it was a good idea, is not the right approach. Forming a committee just to meet to meet isn't a good approach either. But really, it should resonate from all of you. So I'm going to take the committee piece and leave it in your capable hands. Counselor Loggins, then, or Ray?
Thank you for doing that. I think it's important. There are a lot of things buzzing through my head. But I do want to emphasize that in a couple of the committees that I was part of, it was incredibly important for staff to be there. And I know that it was a major burden, especially during that time of transition. And even now, we are limited with our staff resources. But we couldn't have gotten anywhere without them. And it wasn't to have someone there to type, but it was to have someone there to bounce ideas off of, go through, like, they know so much about the inner workings of our government that we just couldn't have done it without them. So I think that would be imperative to any committees going forward.
No, I totally agree. And that's why I think it would kine well with the budget deliberations. Because that's where, when staff looks at, okay, this is what we need to keep the growth happening and business as usual. And then in addition, there's things like the OCP. We are down a planner right now. And with all the stuff coming through the development pipeline, that's why our OCP is on hold. And that's what our CAO said earlier. So do we put development permits and all those things on hold while we work on our OCP? It's a balancing act. So that's where I think we need to really strongly consider that. So it's something, and maybe it is as fine, in which case, any items you want to bring forward, we would bring. The notice of motion works, because then it gives everyone time to think about what it is or to gather information. When items are just added to an agenda, there's no context necessarily. So then it's, if you're looking for support on something, it's all on the spot. I mean, both can be done. But the notice of motion just gives time for conversation. It gives a public a heads up that this is coming through to the agenda because it hits the two, you get it in writing, so it's introduced at one, and then it's debated at the second. So it's two opportunities to get information and to have a fulsome debate. When it's just added, sometimes for time and time sensitivity, it has to be done that way, but the context isn't there. So there's another option if there is something is just, okay, I don't want to do the committee, but I want, this is important to me as a party, then you can add it that way, too. And then it's just up to your peers to support it. But in this, when you add it quickly, there's no staff background. Nobody knows exactly what it's about. So you kind of scramble a bit. It just depends on what it is. But I agree in terms of particularly with primary health and how that's really moving. I'm thankful to have some support there because it would have been very difficult otherwise. So that's why it ties in well with budget. So it's something to think of. You don't have to decide today. I just want to put it on you. Think about it. Think about what you'd like to see unfold and your portfolio and what your objectives are. Counselor Ray?
Yes, thank you, your worship. Through to the CAO. I was just wondering if, because I went looking for it in the minutes, the Sioux Community Center Advisory Committee last spring in 2016 provided a report. the SUK Community Center Advisory Committee last spring in 2016 provided a report, and I was just wondering if I could get a copy of it. I think it's important, given the conversation this evening about the SUK Community Hall, because I think there's a bigger picture there from the recommendations that came from that committee, and I'd like to see that. Perhaps maybe we could all get a copy of it. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Counselor Ray.
Absolutely. I'll make sure that it's in your mailboxes tomorrow.
Okay. Anything else from members of council? Counselor Ray, or pardon me, Counselor Loggins?
Sorry. One quick thing to follow up on that, just to give a bit more context to that, is that the intent at the time was to provide council with a back-and-forth conversation, that report being the first piece of the back-and-forth, and then to continue having the discussions back and forth until we could consolidate some ideas. So if we can, I know we don't have the committee now, but if we can work on it going forward with that kind of mindset, I think that we can get somewhere with it.
Anything else on the resolutions? Anyone? Okay, thank you very much, staff, for all of your time in putting that together, and I hope that gives you a bit more clarity on that. So I would just like, I don't think we need a motion for that because we've kind of gone through it, right? We've received it. Okay. Is there any further public input on? No, okay. So new business, discussion of Atlantic salmon in Puget Sound release, or release of. Counselor Pearson?
Yes, and I did make a notice of motion. I think I copied some of you on that, is that I'd like the council to consider some of the recent publications, and I'm trying to follow as much as I can, that it's considered a natural disaster of huge proportions. And as many of you know that, you know, salmon is one of our, you know, our mainstays of recreation as well as economic driver here in SUK. And if there was a spill, because that's what they're calling it, a spill of Atlantic salmon in our harbor, if we happen to have things, it could be devastating to our natural salmon stock. Because they're, you know, when they, when they escape, they know nothing except to survive, which means they start eating fry and all kinds of things. And again, I'm not a scientist. I'm just trying to follow what's online. So what I was hoping to do tonight was have a discussion with you and put an awareness piece forward to perhaps see if there's an appetite to bring this forward to a regular council meeting to, for you to think about what does it mean to our community salmon farms? I'm of the opinion that we should, SUK should be a salmon farm-free community. And I think our basin is so small and so contained that if there was a spill of that size and there was a salmon farm in our harbor, and it happened to coincide with the release of the fry from our important hatcheries, they could be gobbled up by the farm salmon. So it's something that I would like each of you to sort of consider and perhaps try to get it on our regular council agenda for some discussion. I think there's some staff input. I don't know where we would go for scientific information because, you know, our government is being sort of very, very quiet on the issue. But, you know, when you, when you start reading around, some of the experts, the Suzuki Foundation and things like that are saying that, you know, it's potentially a huge issue. So anyways, I just want to bring it to everyone's attention. If we can get it on the regular agenda, I would, I will be putting a more forward motion that SUK be a salmon farm-free area. So I don't know whether that, we will get input from the public. What's that?
How many salmon farms do we?
Currently operating, I'm not sure that we have any, so, but.
Yeah, not that.
I know it's regulated, it isn't provincially regulated. There's a lot to it. It's just that I think that I would really support land-based salmon farming. I mean, it's a food source, and I think that we have to start, it's a mixed bag of things that are going on there. It's a federally regulated fishery that is our wild stock, provincially regulated fish farms, and the one that, what's caused all the trouble is an American one, which is in close proximity to us. So I mean, we don't have any jurisdiction over them anyways. But I think that somewhere in our community, in our coastal communities, somebody has to start the discussion, and I'd like that to be SUK. I think that, you know, there's got to be more discussion around it.
But you could make a recommendation, like the committee of the whole, like could do a recommendation now to council. So rather than introducing a notice of motion at the council meeting for the following council meeting, you could just do one now if you liked.
And that was the point of tonight being it on the committee of the whole, was for each of you to have your input, just to see what the appetite is around the table about that discussion, whether you'd like it to take it forward or not. It's very important, I think, that, it's a personal issue for me because I, you know, I support the salmon enhancement, the SUK salmon enhancement, the good work that they're doing, but it's not just our community. It's all the communities up the coast, right? This is, you know, if you start reading some of the literature that's out there, they're considering this a natural disaster.
Well, I can see why. I mean, it's essentially, no, I agree with you, Counselor Pearson, and I'm glad you raised it, is that it's essentially an invasive species that is putting pot into our waters, and then it feeds on all of our wild stock that are already threatened for many different reasons.
We, we have a very fragile ecosystem with our salmon, and the stocks are diminishing at an alarming rate already, so they don't need another bump. And that's the point of me bringing it forward.
And our volunteers at both hatcheries and the interpretive center have done tremendous work over the years.
So I also would like, and I'm going to make a motion now to bring it to our regular council meeting, and then advertise it on our agenda so that maybe, and I'll contact some of the people from SUK Salmon Enhancement and some of the people that would come to speak to it. Because I'm not really sure where we can go, but I think that there needs to be some momentum from a coastal community like ours. It's an extremely important resource to us. Thanks.
So do you want to make a motion then for, and then this, the committee of the whole will just flow to the next, to next week's council meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion be that SUK be a salmon farm-free community?
Yes.
Does that language work?
I don't know if we can make that motion here. I was making a recommendation.
It'll be a recommendation.
A public discussion that salmon farms or the escapement of salmon-farmed fish could be harmful to our environment. I don't know that we can make a motion at this, to the effect that it's a salmon-free. I'm not sure that I was getting there, but I will make that motion.
Sorry, yeah, yeah, salmon farm. Yeah, that's why we need the language.
Water-based salmon farm.
SUK to be, SUK to prohibit water-based salmon farming?
Yes.
Is that, SUK to prohibit?
Well, I think, you know, and not to sort of get to the, to the next part of it, we have a lot of land that's considered marginally agriculturally viable for land-based farming, for traditional livestock and growing things. But, you know, going to the next step, maybe we could pump water, ocean water, to some of these areas where that is. That's agriculture or aquaculture. I'm not sure what you would do. So maybe some of these lands that are not viable in the current farming status could potentially do this. I mean, I think there's some discussion around that.
Okay. So for now, though, SUK to prohibit water-based salmon farms. That's the recommendation?
Yes.
So, yeah, there's no second, because we're in committee of the whole, and then that'll come to the regular council meeting. Does that language work with you?
That's good for me, yes.
Okay. Counselor Ray?
Just a comment. I'm thinking if we're wanting to have that broader discussion, it probably should come to a committee of the whole because our agenda for a regular council meeting allows 10 minutes for public input. So, you know, I'm just putting it out there that I think it's, I think it's absolutely a necessity to have that conversation. But if we want to have it as a public input session, I think a committee of the whole might be the better way to get that public input.
I'd really like to hear from some of the, some of the local experts, as well as maybe they could drum up some, some bigger experts, I guess is what I'm thinking.
Okay, so, I mean, what we can do with the regular council meeting is then also refer it to a next committee of the whole with inviting da-da-da-da-da, and then in the meantime, Counselor Pearson can talk to whomever, and then we'd be looking at an October date for a broader conversation.
Perfect. Thank you.
Does that work? In that way, it's all covered off and the conversation gets flowing anyway out of here.
Good, thank you.
Okay, good. Okay, so that is the end of that. So we'll just call for a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole. Moved by Counselor Ray. All those in favor? Posed, motions carried. We do need to reconvene our in-camera portion of the meeting, so we'll just require a few minutes just to maneuver technology and such.